I'd like to call the meeting, please, to order. Are you all ready? Mr. Guermandi, welcome.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. We're going to be adjourning into closed session before we start the regular agenda. Ms. Glanville, could you please read the closed session item? Thank you.
Item number one is conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.6 with county-designated labor negotiator Judy Hawkins and Shay Johnson regarding employee organizations, Service Employees International Union (SEIU), Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association (CCPSA), Calaveras County Deputy Sheriff's Association (DSA) and Calaveras County Sheriff's Management Union (SMU).
Okay. Are there any public comments on the closed session item?
There are no public comments.
Okay. We will adjourning to closed session and reconvene at 9:00. Thank you, Ms. Glanville. I'd like to welcome me back to the regular agenda. If you can, please stand. We're going to do the pledge, and I ask that you please remain silent. Thank you. Or remain standing. Thanks. Mr. Mills, please.
Please draw us a slip to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm asking, and we stand for a moment of silence for our former sheriff, Dennis Downham, who died a week ago. Please. Thank you. Because of Sheriff Downham, we have a new jail and a new sheriff's office during his tenure, plus lots of arguments with me. Ms. Glanville, do you want to report out, please?
Would you like me to read the report out for 11:03?
Yes. Thank you.
The report of closed session for November 3rd, closed session. Item number one, public employee employment pursuant to government code section 54957B1, county agriculture commissioner, director of weights and measures. There was no reportable action taken. Item number two, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.6 with county-designated labor negotiator Judy Hawkins and Shay Johnson regarding employee organizations, SEIU, CCP, SCA, DSA, and SMU. The item was canceled. Item number three, conference with legal counsel regarding initiation of litigation one case pursuant to government code section 54956.9D4. The board authorized the initiation of litigation. The report out for closed session item for November 10th. Item number one, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.6 with county-designated labor negotiator Judy Hawkins and Shay Johnson regarding employee organization, Service Employees International Union (SEIU), Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association (CCPSA), Calaveras County Deputy Sheriff's Association (DSA) and Calaveras County Sheriff's Management Union. There was no reportable action taken.
Thank you. Item 14 is being pulled at the request of the presenters, and I'm assuming we'll come back at a later date. Item 17 is being pulled by the department, and we'll come back on the agenda on December 8. Thank you. Are there any staff announcements, Ms. Glanville?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thanks. I'd like to move to the regular agenda. A report out from public health. Ms. Stranger, are you on the line with us, please?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kristin Stranger, Health and Human Services Agency.
Oh, nice background.
Thank you to the Visitors Bureau, who I utilized their picture. Thank you. Good morning. Today for the update about COVID-19 for Calaveras County, I'll be presenting a number of updates that have occurred over the past week or so. Beginning with the case rates for November 10th, 2020. As we reported out in our Friday's press release, Calaveras County currently remains at 366 positive cases of COVID-19 in Calaveras County. We currently have 13 active cases and 21 fatalities. We were notified late last evening that Calaveras County will remain in the yellow tier, which is the minimal tier, as part of the statewide blueprint for a safer economy. We are one of nine counties who are currently in the tier status. This information will be made available to the public at a statewide level during the governor's noon press conference. Statewide, some statistics that are from the November 9th date. Statewide, we remain at 971,851 positive COVID-19 cases. There have been 17,977 deaths statewide. As the governor noted in his press conference yesterday afternoon, we are seeing statewide increases in the number of hospitalizations as well as the number of ICU admissions. And so, as a community, we remind everybody about those safety mitigation efforts that we've been speaking about since the onset of the pandemic. They remain ever so important, as they have throughout the entire pandemic, to ensure that our community members are keeping distance, washing their hands, staying home if they're sick, as well as avoiding gatherings to the greatest extent possible. Some other information about local statistics, we have continued to see countywide, our numbers continue to increase in terms of positive cases in our community. They are increasing at a rate that has not yet put us in a more restrictive tier. But again, those mitigation efforts that I just covered will be extremely important if our community would like to remain in a yellow tier, of which we all would. I also wanted to highlight some key messages that have come forward through a number of guidances, as well as statewide communication efforts. As a reminder, the Gatherings Guidance is on the Blueprint for Safer Economy website. It's also on our local website for COVID-19 updates. As a reminder, Gatherings are limited to no more than three households. They should be held outside. And again, distance, face coverings, all of those mitigation efforts are also part of that. As we approach or we move into the colder months, a reminder that the flu shot is, again, ever so important this current year. We had a very good response this year from our community at our Mark Twain Medical Center, as well as Public Health Joint Flu Clinic. And we want to recognize all of the team members who were involved in putting together that amazing flu clinic. Very great response from the community. And I just wanted to highlight both the local hospital, as well as the public health team for doing such a fantastic job of organizing that drive through the flu clinic. You have begun to hear through the local news, as well as through the statewide news, about information about how the new Pfizer vaccine is continuing to be developed. At this time, we're seeing reports of it being 90% effective at preventing COVID-19. The governor did cover this yesterday at his press conference as well. In terms of local planning, our public health team continues to prepare for mass vaccination clinics when that vaccine is made available. We know that there will be, in the first wave of the vaccine distribution, when it is ready, there will be prioritization for some higher-risk groups, such as healthcare workers, responders. And then from there, the plan is to work out the vast vaccination to make it available to the general community. Again, we are not there yet. This is information that is being shared as it has become available. There are statewide planning and task force that are evaluating and working on this every single day. It is one of the top priorities. This includes a scientific safety review work group that is being led at the state level to monitor the vaccine trials. So our team, again, is continuing to prepare for when this vaccination is made available. And again, I just wanted to recognize the efforts of the public health team who are doing such a great job in preparing and planning for that timeframe. Also, I wanted to highlight a couple of other, not so specific COVID-related, but definitely a link. It is time for open enrollment. It has started for Coverd California and for those community members who utilize Medica as their insurance. We would like to remind the community that that open enrollment began November 1st. It goes through January 31st. You can call our office. You can come in the office. You can go online to apply. The process has been made much more simple over the past handful of years. Our offices, our main lobby here in San Andreas is open with modifications. We have also reopened our Copperopolis and West Point outstations with modifications, of course, to increase distancing and have those safety measures in place. You can visit our website for further information. So with that, that covers the updates that I have today, and I can take any questions.
Does the board have any questions or comments I'd like to make to Ms. Stranger? I'd like to remind the public that you can Zoom on this and ask questions. If you go to the agenda, it will show you how to join our meeting. Are there any public comments on Ms. Stranger's presentation?
There's one caller with the last four digits of 6592. Would you like to make a public comment on this item?
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stranger. Appreciate it. I'd like to move to the general public comments. If anyone would like to make a comment on an item that is not on the agenda, please call in, or if you're on Zoom, raise your blue hand.
I have no public comments.
All right. Seeing no public comment, I'd like to move to the consent agenda. This will be acted on at one time unless any member of the board, staff, or public would like to pull a consent agenda item. Board, do you have any item? I'm going to move on. Staff. Does any staff member have a consent agenda item they'd like to pull? No? Does any member of the public have a consent agenda item that they would like to pull and have discussed? Okay. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda. Why are we laughing? We're laughing because Mr. Mills is sort of the king of consent agendas, and so I always look to him to see if he's going to pull something, and he's not today. But, Mr. Mills, please.
I sensed a little trepidation in your eyes. That's all I was trying to show.
Well, I might have pulled item number 10 simply because the chief is here.
Are you pulling it? The chief would like to get back. I think, you know, maybe he checked my house and see if my heater is working. May I have a motion, Mr. Stopper?
Madam Chair, so may.
A motion by Supervisor Stopper and a second by Supervisor Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Thank you, Chief.
Bye, Chief.
Your buck, you did work.
All right. Let's move to the regular agenda, item part two. As I mentioned earlier, item 14 has been pulled and will be dealt with at a later meeting. I'm going to move to item 15 from the assessor, who's requesting a resolution exempting taxation, real and personal property where the cost of, excuse me, assessing and collecting the taxes exceeds what the tax is. Ms. Davis, are you on the line with us, please?
I am, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Well, I'm sorry, Ms. Davis. My apologies. Is there anything you would like to mention on this item before I ask for board comments?
There are a couple of things that I would comment on, Madam Chair, as the board might remember. We discussed the low-value exemption during a study session that I had with your board in August. And at that time, I explained the rationale behind the request. As you might remember, our current low-value exemption is $2,000. That was established by Board Action in 1991. We came to the board in 2002, asking for an increase to $5,000, and the board declined to move in that direction. The law changed to allow a $10,000 exemption. Tax collector, the auditor, and I have worked together to determine what our actual costs are. I also used the Senate Bill 2557 costs that the auditor's office produces every year to determine what it actually costs us to assess property in Calaveras County. As I read the staff item, the way I wrote it got changed through the review process, and I just want to be clear that a couple of changes that were made are not quite speaking to what we're doing. In the staff discussion, it says the assessor is now asking the board to consider increasing nonpossessory interest exemption to $10,000. That is not accurate. I am asking the board to increase all low-value property exemptions to $10,000. The code allows possessory interest to be exempted up to $50,000, but there is no justification for that increase because we cannot establish that it costs us that much to assess possessory interest. Over the course of the last couple of days, I've received a couple of questions, so I'll go over those publicly, if I might, with you, Madam Chair, and the board. The total assessed value that would be subject to exemption, in other words, those properties that are between $2,000 and $10,000, would be $25,215,224 coming off the assessment roll. The questions that I got included what would be the impact on the county's general fund. The county's general fund impact for that would be a minus $42,385. The bulk of the reduction would apply to the schools, with a very minor reduction to the City of Angels and to the special districts. Again, this low-value exemption has existed in state law for decades. The purpose of the exemption is to improve the efficiency of government operations by eliminating work that does not result in adequate revenues to cover the cost of the work, and it would give us an opportunity to redirect resources toward those assessments that do improve the county's position. So I'm available for questions, Madam Chair, if the board has any.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Mills.
Yes. Good morning, Leslie. The question that we have is, you said the cost per parcel of $105.95. What does it really cost? If we go to $10,000, what's it going to cost the office, or what's it going to save the office in not having to deal with those parcels?
Well, right now, we have about 45,000 parcels. This would exempt about 10% of those parcels. So what that should do, certainly not all of these parcels are assessed annually, but if you look at the outline of what we have, 2,388 are real property, and most of those are probably existing base-year values that are simply quite low, and we're factoring those forward every year. But the balance of the assessments, the remaining 21 or 2200 are assessed annually. So that would save our staff time, probably about, I'm going to say, 30% of one staff person at the appraisal level, and probably 25 to 30% of one of our tech people would be able to redirect their attention to other work.
Leslie, what I'm trying to determine is whether or not this makes financial sense, if it's a wash, you know, the amount of money that we're not going to gain or potentially gain versus the amount of money that we're expending to potentially gain it. It has to be fairly close.
Well, I think, you know, the purpose of the law is to make sure that we're not doing things that are costing the county money. And this is activity that is costing the county money. In other words, the county and the special districts and the schools are not making enough to pay for the effort that is being expended. But additionally, if we are able to redirect the efforts of that .3 FTE appraiser and the assessment tech toward work that does in fact increase the assessment roll, then I think what the county sees is a positive, as do the schools and the special districts. Certainly, I'm sure you're getting some of the phone calls that I'm getting from property owners who have purchased their property two, maybe three years ago. And because of our backlog and because of the problems that we've experienced, they're now getting an assessment that should have been issued a couple of years ago. So hopefully, we're able to increase our efficiencies by eliminating this type of work. We would be able to make an even greater impact on getting that work completed.
Thank you for your response.
Mr. Stopper.
I see it kind of washed. Now, moving up the value to $10,000 at $105.95, as Mr. Mills brought up. After we do all that work, and you're bringing up special districts, and you're bringing up the school district, we don't get all that revenue in, even if you were going to do the work. So it would be a small percentage, which in the long run, we're losing out on the total value even more significantly, in my mind. So, I mean, you said 2,388 real properties out of approximately 4,500 in the whole county, which, you know, at the max would be $253,000, $253,860. That doesn't necessarily all go to the county. We get a small portion of that, correct?
Correct. Again, the county's general fund, the impact to the county's general fund would be about $42,000.
Right. Right. So all in all, what you're saying is we would be upside down, $210,000 in a worst-case scenario on that if you were to go through and go ahead and do all this work?
I don't...
Worst-case scenario.
I don't really think I'm saying that. But let me go a couple steps further.
Okay.
The real property parcels that are currently assessed for less than $10,000 would continue to factor forward in the background. And if they ever reached that $10,000 limit, they would then become assessable. This does not eliminate them from assessment in perpetuity. It only exempts properties whose value is less than $10,000. The remaining 2,100 that are business property, boats, planes, possessory interest, those typically depreciate annually. So their value is actually going down. And what, you know, when we talk about what staff is spending time on, staff is spending time on properties that are going down in value, whereas this exemption would stop us from wasting that time.
Understood, Leslie. Thank you very much.
Mr. Guermandi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. Good morning, Leslie. I have a couple of questions. When we talk about the cost, and I think Ben alluded to this earlier, we get about 18 cents on the dollar that comes back to the county. And so when we're looking at, I assume that's correct. So when we're looking at the cost of what is costing us to collect this, we're saying it costs us more than that 18 cents. Right? So that's the bottom line, I'm assuming. So, did you say, did you agree?
I did not agree.
Okay. Explain it to me.
Okay. So the way the law operates is we're supposed to look at the total cost to assess, collect, and apportion those taxes. That is, to all agencies that share in those tax dollars. You are completely correct, Supervisor Guermandi, that the county has always had to pay full tilt for what we do for you and the schools and the special districts. We are able to build back, under Property Tax Administration rules, for some of that expense in the special districts, but we cannot build back to schools. Nonetheless, for this calculation, it is the total cost for the assessor's office function, the tax collector's office function, and the auditor's office function as it relates to property taxes.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think you hit on the point briefly that I'm concerned about. My concern is really the impact on school districts. I reckon, you know, we have our costs, but I don't want to take, I wonder how much money this would take out of our school districts by us doing this. Because I understand, I mean, we might be making a general fund contribution by collecting these taxes, obviously, because it's not paying for itself. But how does that impact our schools? And do you have the number on that, Leslie?
I do. But let me preface my comments by saying this. This would be a reduction from the local property tax amount. However, schools have a whole lot of other funding mechanisms, if you will, coming from the state, and they may not in fact lose dollar for dollar. But the calculations using this year's property tax rate is that Mark Twain Elementary District will lose about, not quite, but about $12,500. Bret Hart will lose about $34,500. Calaveras Unified will lose about $56,250. And Vallesito Elementary will lose about $21,000.
So do we have, have we had any input from the school districts on this?
No.
No. But, Mr. Guermandi, it would, the effect, from my understanding, working with the school districts in the past, is CUSD would not lose money as their gap-filled-funded district as they don't get assessed taxes to the minimum amount per student. So the ones that would actually hurt would be Bret Hart and Vallesito when it comes to those funds. Leslie's right. There's different types of funding that comes in from the state, and the assessed value that comes in on taxes for CUSD, for example, never hits that minimum mark, so the state gap fills that in, as opposed to the other side of the county where it would hurt them. So there's a give and take there.
Right. I get that, and that's a very good point. I'm just really concerned about hurting the school districts, even, you know, the school districts that my children don't attend are going to get hurt by this. The other question I've got, Leslie, is, you know, kind of a question I was pondering last night when I was reading through this on fairness. You know, we're letting people with less than $10,000 not have to pay any taxes. And I understand the math as a business, but is anybody having concerns about general I'm telling these people they don't have to pay property taxes because it doesn't make business sense for us.
Are you at the need to respond to that?
You or my fellow board members, all of you can.
Okay. Well, if I might, the whole concept of fairness has been coming up for the last 42 years since the passage of Prop 13. And as you will remember, what Prop 13 said was that all property gets a base-year value established as of March 1, 1975, unless the property or a portion undergoes a change of ownership or completion of new construction. So from a fairness standpoint, somebody who bought their property on or before March 1, 1975 has a really, really old base-year value. But somebody who bought their property at the height of the market in 2005 has a very high base-year value. And they could live right next door to each other in identical homes on identically sized property, and one might be paying 10 times... property, and one might be paying 10 times the taxes that the person next door are. We don't live in a world where property taxes are fair. We live in a world where property tax law is determined not only by the voters, who just passed Prop 19 last week and will change some things, but who have also passed other propositions over the last 40 years. So from a fairness, I will tell you that from my own perspective, my job's to administer property tax law and not think about fairness, because there are so many examples I could give you where it's not fair, that which is, it would really be a waste of time for me.
I understand that, Leslie. I think it's a very good point. But, you know, you've got your task to do, and we set these policies. And so we have to decide whether we care about that as well as a board. So anyway, that's my questions. One's philosophical, and one is about the school districts.
That is philosophical.
Yes.
And do we want the county to pick up that fairness?
That's exactly it.
Mr. Stopper.
I was just listening to Leslie, and she did bring up one point that, you know, the person that bought the homes 1975 or earlier, the, these have already been assessed or on the rolls, so they aren't necessarily the guy or lady that bought it in 2019 for $500,000. So aren't they already in there? So what's, what's the work on the change on those ones if they're, they're below that? I mean, other than, you know, the work that's already been done, it's just the tax collector and the assessor's office with, there's no, there's no change in it other than, you know, maybe a 1% gain per year as per Prop 13? Isn't that, doesn't the computer already analyze that annually on its own? Or, I mean, please explain to me, the ones that are on the rolls already from 1975 or earlier, already in there? So what work are we saving on those?
Well, it's, it's not that you're saving work on, on a year-by-year basis. This is basically about not expending the time and resources to assess property where you're not collecting enough to cover those costs. Is, are there properties from 1975 that are below $10,000? I'm sure there are. Many of our real property assessments below that number are probably mineral rights, where we have fairly minor dollar values attached to those. I have not gone back and done any kind of analysis about which types of property other than the categories that I gave you. What's business property? So these are 562 small businesses who would be exempted from paying taxes on their business property. These are 1,352 boat owners who would be exempted from paying taxes on their boat or ski do, which, whatever they've got. It's not necessarily about a year-by-year. I used that example, Supervisor Stopper, in response to Mr. Guerminde's question about fairness.
It may take me a while, Leslie. Sorry. I'm still catching up.
No, no, no. Take your time, Mr. Stopper.
Feel free to, feel free to ask in a different way for me, and maybe I'll be able to help.
Mr. Mills.
Yes. Leslie, for instance, the 11 aircraft that you speak about, just because it has a tail number, is now subject to taxes. I'm going to tell you from personal experience, I would not fly in an aircraft if it was worth $9,000. That just does not make sense to me. So I don't know what, you know, what value having them on a tax is. Likewise, with the manufactured homes, you're talking about an average of right around $5,000 per. We've got travel trailers that are worth more than that. So, you know, that's another thing, is that these are, these are not exactly what you call exemplary locations that can generate any income. And when you separate out the mineral rights and grazing rights and everything else, you know, there's, there's a lot, you know, if you really want true fairness, everyone would be paying the same amount, no matter what the parcel is. That's not really where we're at. So I just have, I have real concern that we're spending so much time on properties that have no real value to the system. And what this does is this would in essence clean it up, so you can move forward and really start to get the assessments correct on those properties that have been changing hands regularly, that can probably do us a lot more good than what's here. I guess I'm kind of making my own political statement when I say that as well.
Mr. Toffenelli.
Yeah. Good morning, Leslie. How are you?
Good morning, Ian.
Hey, I just have a couple of questions, and what Jack brought up, it crossed my mind several times that we're excusing people from paying taxes. And what you put forward, Leslie, on your assessment on fairness, there are some caveats to that. If I buy a house in 2019 next door to somebody that's lived in there since '75, I chose to do that. I made that choice. I decided, okay, I want to do that. So it's not like it's being forced on you. You have a choice. You have a choice to not even live in California if you don't want to live in California and pay those taxes. That's what it's set up to be. That's what it's been since 1975. That was voted in. So you have the choices, whether you want to make, do that or not. The issue, there's a couple of issues that I need to clarify, and I'm not opposed to this, I just want to get in clear in my mind. How, are we going to have a big rush of people now coming forward saying that their property is not worth more than $10,000 now? How are we going to stay on top of these properties as they come forward, being assessed under $10,000? We're still going to be putting time in for that. No matter what happens, you still have to put time in to some of this, to keep it current. And including, if I have a property that is worth under $10,000, and I go to the building department, and I pull a construction permit, and I improve that property, then the value does go up. So how, where are we on the construction permits? Are we current on that, on assessing value on the construction portion of it? Or are we behind on that? If we are behind, how far behind are we?
So Supervisor Toffenelli, I'm not sure where to start with your comments, but I think I'd like to start by talking about exemptions for a minute, if I might. Exemptions are absolutely a public policy issue. This is why, in this particular instance, it is coming to your board, because it is a public policy question. For the most part, in the Constitution, the authority to exempt property from taxation is reserved to the legislature. And over the years, the legislature has adopted a number of different kinds of exemptions. I'm talking to you about those because, you know, we're not really excusing people from paying taxes. There are very real reasons for each and every exemption. So one exemption, as I think you all know, is the homeowner's exemption. Everyone who qualifies for the homeowner's exemption, who lives in it as their primary residence, gets $7,000 taken off of their assessed value because it is their primary residence, and provided that they filed the proper claim forms with the assessor. There are also church exemptions and religious exemptions, which sound the same, but they are not. There are welfare exemptions. There are hospital exemptions. There are disabled veterans exemptions. So there are a number of purposes that the legislature has found over the years are worthy of providing an exemption. The purpose of the low-value exemption, the purpose is to ensure some efficiency in government. So it's not that we're excusing people from paying taxes. We do have people contact our office all of the time claiming that their value is too high. Do I expect there to be a big rush on our office because, oh my gosh, my property is worth less than $10,000? No, I do not. We have a very good feel for what the value of property is, and if it's less than $10,000, the way the law operates, if your board passes this resolution, then we would simply not assess that $9,000 plane that Supervisor Mills won't get in, or the business who is just struggling to get by. And we know they probably have a couple of desks and a couple of computers, and they don't get anywhere close to $10,000. So I don't expect it to be a big rush. How do we stay on top of these properties? Well, I can tell you, we're going to stay on top of those properties the same way we are staying on top of the $2,000 low-value exemption that has been in play for almost 30 years. We, we know what the rules are. We know what the value is in very general terms, but we're pretty good at this. And so if the value of the property is personal property, meaning boat, business, plane, then we simply won't enroll it. If the value of the property is less than $10,000 and it's real property, we will in fact input that into the computer system so that it is factored forward. And the savings on those will be primarily with the tax collector auditor offices and their, their particular efforts. So we are still at, in the assessor's office, going to have some effort to put out in determining, is this assessable, or should it be enrolled but exempted with that $10,000? And if a property owner improves the property and the value goes up, we're going to know because we're going to be alerted that a building permit was pulled. And if we're not alerted that a building permit is pulled, in other words, if someone is bootlegging the improvement, or they're just trying to get by without a building permit, then my expectation is we're going to catch it sooner or later, and it will be assessed. So I'm not really concerned about that. The last question that you asked is how far behind are we? My chief appraiser told me about a week ago, maybe two, that they were starting the 2019 events. So we've, we've caught up. We're not three or four years behind. We are now two years behind 2019 and most of 2020. So we are still behind, but we're making some, some inroads and improvements, I believe.
Thank you, Leslie. I appreciate all of that. I do have one last question, though. If one of these real properties, I'm not so concerned about the personal property parts of it, but the real property portion of it, if we assess them below $10,000 in, say, five years from now, that property sells for $20,000. And the property owner has been saying to the new owners that they haven't been paying property tax, then it'll kick in automatically that it's now been sold for over this amount, and they will be reassessed for the current value to which they paid for it. And that will go on the books, you know, even though before it was under $10,000, now it's currently above $10,000. We will kick that back into the system, correct?
That is correct. And let's, let's be very clear. An exemption is a year-by-year application. So if it's $9,500 this year in assessed value, and next year it's $10,100, that will kick it out of the low-value exemption. These properties are not being taken off the assessment rule forever. It's an annual exemption that gets applied.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Stopper.
Okay. I rethought my question, Leslie, because you brought up, Gary, or Mr. Toffenelli brought up some very good questions there, and you answered it with a few things that went into what I was asking. So only reappraisable events are reappraised each year. Are the rest under computer refactoring each year?
Yes, to the extent-
So at that point, if they're entered in at under $10,000, how much staff goes, time goes into that refactoring?
Not very much. We-
So if they're, if we've been at $2,000 prior to this, and they're already on there, and they're under $10,000, and not much staff time goes into refactoring with the computer, why are we giving them an exemption under $10,000 if it's already entered in?
I heard Barbara through the wall say, what? And so I'm just going to have to say, what? But if you look at, if you look at my calculations of how much it costs us to assess, you'll notice that 10% of the assessor cost is roll maintenance, and I think that's what you're getting to. That is a relatively small amount. It is the events that have to be assessed, many of which are assessed under $10,000, but not all, obviously, if there's only 2,300, maybe eight real property events. This is, in subsequent years, once a value has been enrolled, it doesn't cost us as much to maintain it if nothing else is happening. But we can't guarantee nothing else will happen, and we can't guarantee which ones will be reassessed and which will not. That's, that's what we had to consider in making the calculation to determine whether or not the cost per parcel justified the $10,000 exemption.
I just, you know, blanketly, giving the $10,000 exemption, if they're already in the system and the computer's already doing the refactoring, at that point, your $195, you know, I understand where you went, and I understand, you know, the thought process that went into it, and I trust completely the number you put forward, but not all, what you just said is not all properties apply to that if they are in the system and the computer's at refactoring. It's about 10% is what you said of that value. So, so at that time, I have a hard time putting every property underneath that exemption. If there, if there's a reappraisable event, I understand, you know, the exemption, but putting them on there if they're already in the computer, and it's refactoring at that 10% cost, you know, that, that would be well below the original $2,000 that you're, you're working on. And I have an issue with taking them off if they're already in the system. Do you understand where I'm going with that?
I think I do. And I think what I really need to say to you is this, and this, in many ways, this gets back to Supervisor Guerminde's fairness issue. You don't get to pick and choose which properties get an exemption and which properties do not get an exemption. What you get to pick and choose is, is the answer to the question, is it costing us more to assess these properties than we are getting back in revenues to cover the cost of the work? And if your answer is yes, and if your answer is $10,000 is that threshold, which is what the tax collector and the auditor and I are telling you is the threshold, then you get to approve an exemption up to $10,000. But what you cannot do, what the board has no authority to do, is pick and choose which properties the exemption would apply to. It is either a blanket number across all properties that would qualify at that number, or it stays at the $2,000, or you can pick something else. You can, you could essentially eliminate the low-value exemption, which I really would not recommend. And, and if I could, I'll go back to something that I brought up maybe 10 or 12 years ago, some of you were not on the board, and that was the decision about whether or not to support the unsecured assessment rule. Our assessment rule is over $7 billion. Our unsecured assessment rule is about $110 million. But at that time, 8% of my staff time was devoted to supporting the unsecured rule. Clearly, if 8% of my million-dollar-plus budget is supporting a portion of the assessment rule, that was so small by comparison, it didn't make good business sense to keep supporting the unsecured rule. Now, Marita and Gary will remember what kind of fight I had when I brought that up. This is a business decision. The business decision is, do you want to keep pouring county money at an effort that is not returning on your investment at that rate? And that's the- And that's the question before you. The recommendation that I'm making, and I'm joined with the tax collector and auditor, is that you should approve a $10,000 low-value exemption.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying on the business sense, I mean, we're pulling hairs here, splitting hairs is more, more of the term, on a very, very insubstantial amount when it comes to it. But my other question to follow up on that, to follow is, you know, with the reappraisable events, and you said, what, 4,500, approximately 400, 4,500 with 2,388 real properties, how many of those are reappraisable each year, and how many of them are already in the computer under annual refactoring?
I didn't analyze that, Supervisor Stopper, so I can't give you that answer.
Okay. Uh, that's good enough for me. Thank you very much, Lesley.
Mr. Toffinelli.
Yeah, and I think the key here to, even though it keeps being a business decision, in the end, we're, we're spending tax dollars, and we're spending more tax dollars than people are paying to collect less money, less tax dollars. So, so the decision is, do we, do we utilize the tax dollars in the best area that will benefit Calaveras the best way? And I think that's the bottom line here, what we're discussing, and, and according to the figures that Lesley's putting out to us, and what's being shown and presented to us, that those tax dollars that we're utilizing for this is better spent on going after, say, a bigger fish, or whatever.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Garamendi.
Mr. Manager. I guess my only concern is, I guess with the discussion part is, you know, I wanna, I wanna make sure that, you know, Bret Hart and Vallesito and the other school districts, fire districts are even aware that this is going on today, because they're gonna lose money as a result of this. So it'd be nice to have their input, or at least their acknowledgement that we're about to do this to them, or considering doing this. That's my only point, just makes me a little nervous.
Ms. Davis.
Madam Chair, I can tell you, I did not reach out to school districts or fire districts. I could tell you what, since you mentioned fire districts, I could give you the same numbers on fire districts I gave you in schools. So, for example, San Andreas Fire would stand to lose about $840 if this passes. But I can also tell you something else. San Andreas Fire Board member contacted me with questions following their bond issue, and, and was looking at a specific area, and that is Oak Shadows Mobile Home Park. And when he mentioned it, and I looked at it, what I discovered was there are 109 spaces at Oak Shadows, and we are assessing 44 manufactured homes. That tells me that my staff time would be better spent not assessing these low-value exempt properties, but getting out and finding what we have missed on the assessment role. So forget the backlog for a minute, there's some obvious cleanup that needs to get done, and that's where I think the attention should be, and where I think those districts will get a better return for the money you are investing.
All right, Ms. Davis, what Mr. Garamendi brings up is, what would be the ramifications of holding this item over until our next board meeting? So we could at least discuss the $30,000 with the schools, or $40,000 as a courtesy?
The only ramification would be if you hold it over to January. So essentially, the way this operates is if you hold a decision till after our lien date, which is January 1st, it will not apply for the upcoming assessment role, but it would apply to the following assessment role. If however you make a decision later this month, or in early December, then that will predate the, the lien date, and it will affect the next assessment role. So it's really a matter of whether or not you push it off to January, or you make a decision-
What if we moved it to the 17th?
Of November?
Yes.
It will have no impact on our operation.
Pardon?
It, it won't have any impact on our operation, it'll be fine.
So it'll just give us a chance to call Bret Hart or Vallesito? Mr. Garamendi.
Madam Chair, I think we could probably guess that they're not going to be supportive of having their budget cut by $30,000.
Well, so then the question-
I don't need to ask someone the time if I'm wearing a watch.
Well, I mean, being the representative for Vallesito, of course not, and, because they rely on it. And having worked with Superintendent Shmenti on debt advisory in the, during the trauma-drama days, no, they won't be happy. So the question comes down is, should the general fund pay for the schools for not to do this?
But then we're picking and choosing, if you're saying just the schools, you've got fire districts and $890, or whatever it was, of San Andreas, right now, could be a lot of money. I, I'm in agreement with putting this off, at least, it's gonna happen, but they won't be blindsided. At least we let them know, and, and I would say, make it December 8th, instead of November 17.
It's, Ms., I don't, I don't want to push this out till January.
December 8th.
Ms. Davis, could we go till December 8th and bring this back on December 8th as a courtesy to the fire districts and the school districts? The question before the board has not changed. And do we want to subsidize, which is what we'd be doing, the schools and the fire districts? So that's the question before us, and, and the general fund. Do we want to do, pay more for what it's costing us in revenue? So, okay, Mr. Mills?
Yes, I, I'm not in disagreement with doing that, however, you know, Lesley, we're only talking about one side of the equation here. The other side is, is making better use of staff time to go out and increase the, the tax rolls through better assessments on the remaining properties. So there's, there's a plus side to this as well, that I think needs to be put into the equation, and not just simply talk about the, the immediate loss, but also the, the short-term gains that are gonna occur when staff is utilized to properly get those assessments corrected. Am I right?
That's what she's saying, Mr. Mills.
Supervisor Mills, I have to agree with you, you just don't often find an assessor talking about, hey, I can, I will have time to go out and increase people's assessed value, and that's gonna increase their taxes, but you are correct.
Okay, so what we're going to be asked, well, let me back up before we do that. I want to ask, if there's no more questions from the board at this point, Mr. Toffinelli?
And I don't, I don't disagree with that at all, but it, it won't be immediately. So there will be an impact. It'll be a gradual, gradual increase as we go, it won't, so they, they will see some funds disappear, whether it's a year, the next fiscal year, the year after, whatever, before they start realizing gains. They still have an impact, and I think we at least owe it to them to let them know what's before us and what we're thinking of doing, so.
Okay, thank you. Are there any public comments on this issue that the assessors brought forward?
I don't have any public comments.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Garamendi.
Madam Chair, how will we notify, who's gonna be responsible for letting everybody know?
Ms. Davis is going to be responsible. If she would like your help, she will call you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Davis, did you get that? If you would like help contacting the fire districts, Mr. Garamendi'd be happy to help you in his respective area.
I have an email list, distribution list for the schools and the fire districts, so I'm not concerned about that.
Yeah, but Lesley, Jack, Jack will be home all next week. He's got nothing to do.
Okay, so my understanding that I, there's support from the board to move this out to the December 8th meeting, um, are there any-
Madam Chair, may I get a motion and a second to table it to the December 8th meeting?
Yeah, I just did that.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stopper. A second by Mr. Mills, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board to move item 15 to the December 8th meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Lesley.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you.
All right, we want to move to item 16, would you all like to?
Would you like to take five minutes? Do you need it?
Do they need to set up for anything?
Pardon? Gambi, do you need time to set up for anything?
I think we're set to go.
All right.
First question is, do you have any property under $10,000?
Let's go walk to the Gambi yard, oh no.
Okay, let's move to item 16, Integrated Waste Management. I want to authorize the board chair to execute the Seventh Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement for Gambi Disposal for the operation of the county's solid waste stations for a 10-year term expiring December 31, 2031. Mr. Alt, are you with us?
Sorry, ma'am, I was on mute, I am with you.
Thank, did you want to introduce this, please?
Actually, what I'd like to do is introduce our new Integrated Waste Man- Manager, Mr. James McArgue, and give him an opportunity to address the board and speak to this item prior to Gambi. And, and I believe that Jim, as we call him, is in the boardroom, I believe?
Yes, he is.
Or Jim, are you on Zoom?
Yes, he is.
I'm here, yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Jim McArgue, and I am the new Integrated Waste Manager.
Could you spell your last name, please?
It's M.C., capital H.A.R.G.U.E.
Thank you, Ms.-
Is the M also capitalized?
The M is also, yeah. Yeah, so some call me just Jim Mick, but, yeah. No, it's very nice to meet all of you, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning. I'm excited about my new position in Calaveras County, and I come to you after over 20 years in the solid waste and recycling and landfill business, and all those years in local county government, and one year in local city government. So we are here for the Seventh Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Gambi Disposal Incorporated for operation of the county's solid waste transfer stations for a 10-year term to expire December 31, 2031. First off, I just want to acknowledge that this has been a rather long, ongoing process, I think several years, and there's been a lot of hard work put in by a number of folks, including Rose from Integrated Waste Management, Julie from County Council, Al Alt, of course, has been involved, and Mark from Gambi here has been very much involved, and then, of course, the efforts of the Solid Waste Local Task Force and Supervisor Stopper have, have put a tremendous amount of work into this, this process. There are six prior amendments, and those have been consolidated into a restated agreement, and that also includes a Seventh Amendment, and that's what we're here for today. So I just want to remind you that I am very new, and I come in at the very tail end of this process, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this item, and we also have, as I said, Mark from Gambi here to assist in any questions that may come up.
There are any questions at the moment? Mr. Mills?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Stopper, Mr. Garamendi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome aboard, Jim.
Thank you.
We hear good things about you, it's nice to finally meet you.
Thank you.
A normal environment, we would've seen you many times by now.
Right.
Mark and Rose, thanks for all your work on us. So you've gone through this, and you're in support of this, obviously.
I am.
Otherwise, it wouldn't be for us. I appreciate a lot of the work that the Solid Waste Task Force did, and everybody did, on putting this together. There are a couple cleanups in there that I really appreciated, specifically around six-foot beds and trucks, some of us have eight-foot beds. No one at Gambi likes measuring truck beds, none of us like having truck beds measured. So that's a nice solution, thank you very much. The only thing I really have a comment to is, if we move towards the Eighth Amendment someday, or we move towards any revisions, we continue to have a problem up country, especially in the Willseyville Station, with collecting items that the county takes to the landfill, primarily tires, refrigerators, couches, stuff that Gambi's just not designed to take in all these spots. You know, so I hope that in the future, you could keep that in mind, Gambi could keep that in mind, and you guys could find some way to, on occasion, bring some solution to this board, where we could go and collect that, because obviously, the alternative to us collecting it is Public Works picking it up on the side of the road. That costs the county as well. So we continue to have that problem, it's a two-hour round trip minimum from Willseyville down to Rock Creek and back, or Milton and back, and so, you know, that's a problem that we continue to have. It's not solved by this agreement, but it's, it's an aspirational goal of mine, so I would hope that you guys can help me come up with a solution for my communities.
Yeah, we certainly, we'll make a note of that, and we'll be looking at that.
Mark's, Mark's lived here forever, he knows the deal. We just have to figure out a way to make it equitable for Gambi to afford to collect that and us to take it, so there's gonna have to be some sort of deal cut at some point.
Right.
I still get, I still get notified all the time that 20 years ago, Steve Walensky was able to figure out how to put out dumpsters and community cleanup, and it was a different budget back then.
Right.
But, uh-
No, we'll, we'll certainly look into that, and-
Thank you.
Mark and I can put our heads together on it, and-
That was, that was my only comment.
Okay.
I have some questions, unless other staff members do. Mr. Stopper, you're on the Solid Waste Task Force?
Yeah, go ahead, Marita, I'll, I'll let you go, and then I'll go ahead and follow up.
I guess I need clarification. We are being asked to pay for an additional day at Copper on the Tuesday, but we already have been stopping it, and we're already paying for that, if I go back and forth to the other agreements. So I'm, I'll just sort of talk some of my questions.
Okay.
We seem to be paying Gambi 1,500 two times. The pollution insurance, the insurance, I thought, and performance bonds under most contracts that we have, the vendor is responsible for insurance and performance bonds, why should the county be paying for those? I wasn't clear on the generators. I mean, if the technical ability of generators is not to make noise, because we require that under, in the cannabis ordinance, that generators will be housed, here we're not, so I just want to make sure that there are not going to be generators that will impact the neighbors that live around that. And I'm, also wasn't clear under, I think, under title, I can't read my writing, title to the equipment is being removed, so does that mean that if Gambi leaves, they take the equipment with them, or that the county absorb, that the county has the equipment? Because in essence, we're paying for it. That's about it for now, thank you.
Thank you for that list of questions, and I'm gonna ask Mark, I've, I've made a few notes here, if you might be able to speak to a few of them.
Okay, okay.
Should Copper staff pay 1,500?
Yeah, Jim. Good morning, Mark Zane with Gambi Disposal, again.
Should Copper staff pay fifteen hundred?
Yeah, Jim. Good morning. Mark Zane with Gambi Disposal, again. Good, good. So, Merida, on the Copper, the extra day, we've been, since January of last year, we opened Copper on Tuesday, and we've been billing the county the amount shown, the forty-eight eighty per month to open the extra day. That's in the... In the sixth, yeah, in the Sixth Agreement, or Sixth Amendment. And so, Copper was opened, you know, has been open an extra day, and we've been billing that. Basically, what we're doing is just putting that into the basic facility fee, instead of billing it every month. And then, the... And then, were you asked about the... The fifteen hundred is for the use of Gambi's yard as far as a collection site for the county. When that first started, we were paid for putting a person there to attend the yard for our oil collection, our battery collection, and so on. It's, and electronics. And now, we have metal bins out there, tire bins for the county. So, it's turned into a bigger deal in our yard than it was, it began with. So, we're billing the county fifteen hundred dollars a month for the use of our yard. Here in San Andreas, our corporate yard.
But it wasn't defined when we did that, that it was going to be for services A, B, C, and now it's services A, B, C, D, E, F.
Right, and it's growing more services. So, we're losing more yard to, you know, we've already got a county trailer out there, and we've got bins out there.
Also, the portable generators, which will go on to the final question, that you store in your yard, right?
Yes.
You said that's more area being used.
Right. And basically, the insurances that you're seeing, the pollution insurance and the performance bonds, instead of... Instead of taking a figure and just putting that in the amount that the county pays Gambi, because that's an amount that moves. So, instead of us saying, you know, whatever that amount is, and adding, and trying to figure that out for the next ten years or whatever, we're showing that amount, just because that's our cost. We're not adding anything into those. The pollution insurance is a new, is a new insurance for us, because we never had to have it before.
But that would be like saying, well, I'm going to list all of our insurance. I'm going to list our liability insurance, I'm going to list our workers' comp, I'm listing pollution, I'm listing performance bond. I mean, to me, that's the, you, we pay you...
Yes.
For, and then you add on so much for the cost of doing business, and that's, I mean, how...
Well, we could have done it that way, but we didn't. We decided to show you what we're, what we're being charged for that, and how we're paying. I mean, we can, the figure's still the same if we showed you that or we didn't show you that. You know, it's not... Am I, and I'm not sure if I'm...
No, you're clear. I'm not sure I agree, but I mean, you're clear. I hear what you're saying.
Yeah. Because of, I mean, we're going to pay it one way or another.
Correct.
And we're going to add that into...
The cost of doing business.
The cost of doing business. We just decided to show that in this... And then, on the... On the generators, we've gone to mobile generators instead of permanent. And basically, we came to that decision because we have so much trouble at the transfer stations with hooligans. I don't know how else to say it. We have a lot of trouble at the transfer stations, getting them broken into on a regular basis. And if you, if we go ahead and spend all that money to put permanent transfer, or permanent generators out there with a six-foot fence around it, it's not going to do us any good at all. We're going to be replacing batteries, or pieces, or parts, or whatever. So, we decided mobile generators are the way to go. And in fact, we've already been purchasing them. We have three now, and we have a fourth. You know, we'll get another, another one going. The one we just purchased is, you know, tier four, all set up for... And it will run the whole transfer station. The only transfer station that is not runnable completely is Avery. We lose our cardboard compactor when we're on generator. Because of, when that station was built, they wanted one generator, or one compactor run on a higher voltage than the other. I'm not sure why, but that's what they wanted.
Well, I will have to call Rob Halt and ask him.
Maybe we should call Rob and talk to him about it. I know I had a long discussion with him about it, but... So, that's the direction we've been going, the generators, and we're already, we're already, you know, we've been moving forward on that, so... And the title for the equipment, way back, the supervisors decided they didn't want to own the equipment when we left.
I did that, did I do that?
Yes, yes.
And that's how that came about.
Well, I'm just going to sort of cut to the chase of how I'm feeling. There, it was very interesting reading staff report and all the documents and so forth. I think Gambi's been an excellent, excellent partner in the transfer stations, absolutely. For me, in reading all this and seeing that we have to do language cleanup, I feel like I don't want to, I don't want to support this now. I'd rather Gambi and Integrated Waste get together and clean up the whole thing. I mean, because I was getting, when I was going through it, it's like, okay, is this now in, or is it out? Was it modified in Amendment Six versus Amendment Four? And I like the fact that we had one whole document, but there was more red in there than there was black.
Right.
I would, I would like to see Gambi and the county get together and go through, and we can postpone this for two months, if I remember correctly from staff report, and work out everything, clean up the language, because in a language cleanup, whether it's a may or a must, could happen, and that then changes the contract. I think Gambi should get a good return on their investment. I don't question any of that. I just feel like there was a lot of, is it in, is it out? We need to clean up the language. Gambi seems to agree, the county seems to agree. Why can't all that be done and then be brought back to us? And it's not saying that I don't think, that I'm questioning the fifteen hundred dollars at Copper. It's just a little too convoluted for me to want to support it at this time. Mr. McHill?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to point out, and this may be a question for council, but in the absence of this agreement going forward, there will be a need to activate the two-year extension, and part of that is required a thirty-day notice before twelve thirty-one twenty expiration date. So, at the end of this month, the two-year extension will need to be activated and put into place. And that kind of takes down a separate path. So, I'm not clear if your suggestion to go back to the table, which I think you make some very valid points, I'm not sure how that will affect this particular requirement.
Okay, so, we have to do it by the end of December? We have to approve this contract?
We have to give notice. If we're not going to approve this contract, we have to give notice by the end of this month, November.
Okay, so, could we say?
Supervisor Callaway, if you don't mind, may I clarify?
Yes, please, thank you.
The, the contract term is up at the end of December, but there's a provision allowing the Board of Supervisors to extend the existing contract on its same terms for up to two years. So, the board could say, you know, could choose to extend it for two months, for a year, for one and a half years, et cetera, up to two years. Alternatively, if the board doesn't want to extend it, but it wants to clean up the contract first, we'd have to have some sort of interim agreement if the cleanup was going to take longer than December thirty-first, because the contract will expire at that time. So, the board does have slightly more options than just extend or not extend. It can choose how long it wants to extend as well.
Got it. I'm not looking to extend the contract for two years. I'm just looking to extend it for a couple of months, till it can be, till all aspects can be cleaned up, and the may and the must, or whatever the language is, can be clarified. I was not comfortable with saying, well, we're going to get together again and do language cleanup. And language cleanup can affect a contract. And I am not opposed to Gambi's getting an increase. I'm not opposed to any of that. I am opposed to supporting a contract that has so many different permutations that I'm not comfortable approving it today. That's my thought. Mr. Mills?
Yes, I'm, I'm comfortable approving it. I think the staff, including Julie and your work that you've done on this thing, and the work of the Solid Waste Task Force, et cetera, a lot of people have had their eyes on this for quite some time. And this even goes back to Supervisor Olivera, if you recall, in some of the discussions. So, if we're going to, if we're going to look for a total cleanup and a whole new contract, it's, all the i's are dotted, you'll never get there. So, I would say, just, we've got the work done here. We just need to move forward.
I want to address that a minute, because we have a long-term contract with another vendor that's costing us a lot of money, because we just went ahead and approved it, and I'm...
Nobody else supported that.
Well, I wasn't here. It was when I was on my sabbatical. But, well, somebody did, doesn't matter, the board did. Whether I was here or not, the board made a decision on another long-term contract, which, anyway. Mr. Stoppa?
The other contract you're talking about, I'm, you know, I understand where you're going with it. I don't completely disagree, but right now, we're talking apples and oranges, in my opinion. This is, this is, this is a different animal. And thank you, thank you, Mr. Mills. This has been a long, arduous process with, moving forward. I want to thank council for bringing to light many of the discrepancies throughout the amendments moving forward. But the point of the Seventh Amendment is to clean those up, and it has substantially cleaned those up. And I want to thank Gambi for stepping forward and itemizing some of those changes in costs moving up. That's just transparency, showing why and where those costs are going up. And the reason being, I mean, they didn't have to put that forward. They could have just put a number up there, and then we would have been asking, what, where, why? You know? It's very, it's very simple. And, you know, with the, with the generators, I understand where they're going. You know, there's, there's noise issues, but this is only used during emergency situations. And then, so those sound ordinances are not necessary, aren't a hundred percent the same. And there are certain exemptions with emergency situations when you're moving in generators, you know, still within, within SEQA compliance. You know, this has gone forward through the process that the board asked for a one-year extension last year. They asked it to be reviewed in front of the Solid Waste Task Force. We went through it, we've gone through it, we've gone through it, and went back to County Council, it came back to us, it went back to County Council, it came back to us. And there's been a lot of blood, sweat, and tears. Is there going to be anything perfect in the future? I don't think so. But we, you know, it left the Solid Waste Task Force with a hundred percent support. And I think it's been thoroughly vetted, and this is, I believe, a fair contract to someone that's been a great partner for quite some time.
Are there any other public comments, or board comments on this? Are there any? I was like, did you have anything else you wanted to say, Mr. Alt, or Gambi, Mark?
So, I, we have put a lot of time into this to try and clean it up, and I know it's... I think when you're looking at the red line version of it, it looks pretty messy. But when you look at the version that's not a red line, it, it seems a lot clearer. You know, we've always wanted to be part of the program and be helpful, and so, if there's something that we can do different, we certainly will. And we'll always work with the county on changes or stepping up and doing that kind of stuff. But I think, and I'm not sure which version that you're looking at. If you're looking at the red line version...
I looked at that, too. I'm looking at the moment, the one that's in our staff report.
Yeah, so...
I have nothing but positive things to say about Gambi. We've been awesome partners.
Right.
Totally. I'm just saying, the contract before me today needs some work. It needs agreed to between Gambi and the county, it needs language cleanup. I'm asking for two months for the county and Gambi to sit down and work through all that, so when I look at a contract, I'm not looking at red and black, and whatever, whatever other things need to be resolved. I'm not asking to put this out for two years. I just would like to see something cleaner that comes before us. If both Gambi and the county say that there needs to be language cleanup, I'm not saying that the Solid Waste Task Force and County Council and everybody didn't spend, you know, a dime and a dollar trying to make this right. It isn't for me. So, thank you. I appreciate it, as always.
Thank you, Ms. First.
Pardon? Oh, Mr. Garmending.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Mr., did you have anything else you wanted to say at the moment?
I didn't have anything else, just a bit of...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Garmending.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just a little confused. The documents that we had, had a, one of the versions was amended, was a consolidated document that was agreed to by both our County Council and Gambi as being complete. And so, all we were looking at was the Seventh Amendment to it. So, I have no indication of any i's that need to be dotted, or t's that need to be crossed. My understanding is, we have a document that incorporated all six prior amendments and is clean, and we agreed to by both sides, so we're only talking about the Seventh. Maybe I'm looking at the wrong information, but... we're only talking about the Seventh. Maybe I'm looking at the wrong information, but I'm, so I'm confused at where you want to go, Madam Chair.
Where I want to go is that there's language cleanup that's needed. I don't know what that language, I don't know what that language cleanup is. I just know that it was addressed, that there needs to be language cleanup.
I might have missed that memo.
And so, I'm just saying, let's do two men, two months. Let's do the language cleanup, or one month, I don't care. And to make sure that, I don't want to go into a 10-year contract, an 11-year contract, really, with there being some possible red flags out there.
Well, I, I, I'm not aware of the red flags, so maybe I missed something.
I don't know what they are either. But I just know that there's language cleanup. And well, if we're going to do language cleanup, then why aren't we doing it now?
Is this a closed session item? Am I missing something? Is this a closed session?
Supervisor Germandy?
Yes.
So, both Integrated Waste and our office have noticed, I mean, you are correct, that the consolidated agreement, the working document we put together, is an accurate depiction of all six amendments. All six amendments themselves had some imperfections, had some vague terms, had some inconsistencies. Those were not cleaned up. It is an accurate statement of what it says. It's just that what it says could use some further clarity. It's not clear what things are add-ons, what things are being billed as part of the rate. However, this is something that the board could choose to authorize us to do after agreeing to a Seventh Amendment or prior to.
Thank you.
Mr. Toffenelli?
Yeah, I think this is getting, almost want to plead the Fifth Amendment. I, I'm in agreement with Jack. I, I think in Ben, I think a lot of people have worked on this for a long time. And we've had, we've had it here before. If it was in a situation where it wasn't cleaned up, the paperwork that, that is presented before us, and what Julie has worked on, and the task force has worked on, and Gambi has worked on, is pretty clear. There may be some in the other amendments that Julie had brought up. And if, instead of delaying this, I don't think it's right to delay this, because it's already been delayed. And if, if Merida, if it's going to give us a 5-0 vote on it, then I suggest that we do what Julie says. We approve this today with the caveat of, over the course of the next several months or whatever, we go back and clear, clear up the language in those amendments. But we need to go forward with them, so starting January 1st, they can get the current billion, they get the insurance and the bond, and it's not out of their pocket. Otherwise, it's going to start costing them money, having to pay for these things that are required. So, I would move that.
I have to ask for public comment first. Is there any public comment on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stopper?
I would ask for a little bit of clarity on what you're moving, Supervisor Toffenelli.
I would move the item that's before us, with adding that, over the course of the next year, that the language in the prior six amendments be looked at and brought back to the board with clarifications in them. Is that, is that doable, Julie?
Yes, we could, I would probably recommend that we, that we bring it back as a new contract that's literally not intending to change the substantive terms, but literally just a clean contract, and have it approved that way. And it can contain the terms through the Seventh Amendment, if the board is inclined to grant the Seventh Amendment.
So, this, so what we, what you're proposing is that we approve what we've got in front of us. We take a year to take a look at this, which would be a collaborative, voluntary process with Gambi. We come together, we say, okay, this is the clean contract. We all agree, kind of what we've already done.
Kind of what we've done.
See if there's any holes in it. And, but, but it's not going to oblige Gambi to agree this, because they've already got it. We just agreed to it. But I think we've got 25, 30 years of partnership. I think we could probably work it out, if there's something.
I mean, if there's some language that needs clarification for both sides, not just the county side, but their side, too, if something happens, and we get to a point where we're in disagreement on something, and we go to the amendments, and it's not clear, then I think it's beneficial for both sides that we have concise, clear language leading up to this. But I'm not opposed to going forward, so the motion is going forward with caveat, over the course of the next year, we go over the remaining six amendments and, and see if the language can be cleared up, and we agree on it, and bring it back to the board. But at least we can move forward with them on this contract and what it says in before us today.
Just.
I mean, you're on the solid waste, though.
Right, right. You know, and there, there was quite a bit of work, and that's, that's the work that was done by, by county council when they brought it back forward to Gambi. And they signed, and they both agreed, look, you know, there was conflicts throughout the Seven Amendments. I, you know, I'm not going to point a specific finger, but throughout the course of the years, where solid waste was here, solid waste was there, there's different people in charge, there, there was a lost, a lot of lost information as we proceeded. And, and in certain instances, we were done no favors by certain staff, let's just say, as, as we proceeded. But we are where we're at today, and I, I can agree with what Supervisor Toffenelli's saying, you know, just that, with a caveat, that, you know, anything in the Seventh Amendment that's financially solid right now cannot be changed for the negative for, for Gambi. So that, that way, their interests are protected moving forward. You know, I, I think we can all agree on that.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the, the language that was spoke about by Julie.
Right.
About cleaning up those six prior. I'm not talking about anything about relooking or reopening up.
Okay.
The costs, because obviously, their costs are the costs.
Right.
And, and I want to thank you for at least putting the cost of your performance bond and pollution insurance in there. And, I mean, that's, normally, I do contracts. That's, I charge when I bid something. I don't put that in. I don't put my worker's comp in, my, my liability insurance, but it's built into the bid. You guys at least put it in here to say, hey, this is our cost. This is what we need to recover for it. So, thank you for showing that.
All right. I can, I, if that, if that's your motion, Gary, I can second that.
Could you please re, explain your motion again, so it's clear for the record? Thank you.
I would move that we approve what's before us today in our board packet, what we're being asked to approve, with the caveat that over the course of the next year, we go over with Gambi the six amendments that need the language cleaned up, and come to an agreement with them on cleaning tho, that language up, and bringing it back to us next year with clear, concise language for both sides. And none of that language would affect any of the costs associated with what we're doing today. Is that clear?
Second.
Is this a 10-year or 11-year contract?
10-year agreement. With 10-year agreement, the term is.
January 1st.
5-year extension, 10-year agreement with 5-year extension.
January 1st, 2021 to January.
Well, yeah, but it goes, if it goes January 1, 2021, that's really, you're just short of 11 years, because it ends on December 31st, 31.
She is correct, yes.
It's a nearly 11-year, yes, Madam Chair.
So, it's a day short of 11 years. Should we be approving it as an 11-year contract or a 10-year contract? Or 10-year, 12-month minus a day? So, excuse me, Ms. Edwards?
Yes, the, the Seventh Amendment, you're, you're correct, Madam Chair. It's technically a 10-year, 11-month, 30-day extension, contract extension. And I, just to, I believe, restate what Supervisor Toffenelli's motion is, just so we're all clear. The board, the motion is to approve the Seventh Amendment, to enter into this amendment, but to then direct staff to work with Gambi to see if we can work out what I would call just a restated contract, perhaps, that would be the exact same terms that you're now entering into via this Seventh Amendment, but kind of makes it one pretty document that encapsulates everything we've done thus far, and now this new extension.
Clean document.
A clean document, yes, pretty.
That's exactly what I was asking for.
We can call it, you know, we can call it an amended and restated agreement. I mean, we have options, obviously, as to what we, we call it. And I, you know, given how the parties have worked together thus far, I have no reason to think that we wouldn't be able to come up with this amended, restated, clean, pretty contract that we're all in agreement to. But it would not, just to be clear, you know, as you said, it would not change any of the terms that.
Correct.
The parties are entering into today.
So, is it 11-year contract or a 10-year contract?
Technically, it's not 11-year. Technically, it's a 10-year, because it.
Technically, it's, it's neither. It's a.
That's fine.
Madam Chair, it's a.
Technically, it's neither.
That's fine, fine. That's fine. Let it go. Let it go.
Call for the vote, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion by Supervisor Toffenelli. Ms. Glanville, did you get the vote? Did the motion down? And a second by Supervisor Stopper, is that correct? All in favor? I will vote for this. I meant, I said my thoughts. It wasn't that I didn't agree with what was going into the recommendation for seven. Thank you. You have been an excellent partner over these years. I've worked with you.
Yes, they have.
When every, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
I'd like to move.
Thank you. Good, good work. I appreciate everything all of you have done putting into this.
Thank you, Rose.
Thank you.
I want to, before I move to supervisor comments, we have to redo the announcing of the closed session, because we did take an action. Ms. Glanville, please.
Yes, I would like to amend my report out from this morning on the November 3 meeting. With respect to the closed session, item number three regarding the initiation of litigation, the motion was made by Supervisor Stopper with a second by Supervisor Mills. The board voted four to one to intervene in existing litigation.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to move to supervisor announcements. Does any supervisor have something they would like to tell us about or discuss after you've all beaten me up? Thank you.
Now, I'm going to push the light.
Mr. Mills?
I didn't punch my button.
You're a red light.
I am.
Oh, okay.
My allergies.
Does, no.
I'll do it in private.
No comments from the supervisors? Mr. Germandy, it's nice, nice to have you back.
Nice to have you back, thank you.
So, okay, seeing no comments from the supervisors, this meeting is adjourned.